The format that we're gonna follow on this, and I think we'll have probably more people that'll be coming in, I understand there's still some people that are making their way here from what I was told. But originally, what we're gonna do is we're gonna turn the floor over and let Mr. Randy Taylor, the city finance director, kinda give a brief overview of our city budget. After that, myself, Councilman Culver, and Council President Russell will be given a chance to make some comments, and then we'll open up the floor for questions, comments from members of the public. Again, this is a, I would call it a customer-driven meeting. We're gonna just give an overview of the budget, and then we'll open it up, let people from the public have a chance to ask questions, how your tax money's being spent, things you may not understand, why are we doing it, and you may possibly have some ideas for things that we should budget or changes to make in the future. So with that, let me turn it over to the city finance director, Randy Taylor, and Randy, you can kinda give us an overview of the budget, if you would, please.
Okay. Councilman Kling, Culver, and Russell, and members of the public, we will spend just a few minutes giving a brief overview, as the Finance Committee requested. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
As the Finance Committee requested, and it will be brief, we'll provide some of the information that was provided when the council was considering the budget last fall, and also some information that's presented in a number of other public forums, but it will be brief to allow time for questions and such. The date on there should be tonight, the 2014. We're still being audited for last year, so that's, we're still thinking about 2013. First of all, I'd like to present, at the highest level possible, all of the revenues that the city of Huntsville receives. We'll talk a little bit more about how those are divided up and managed by the city, but this chart, which is available in our online budget document, shows, it's a pie representation of all of the major sources of our city revenues. We have hundreds of accounts, as you might imagine, but this is how they're generally grouped. Obviously, the largest slice of pie on this $327 million total pie is sales tax on the left-hand side. As far as the total city's concerned, it represents a little bit less than half of our total budget. That translates into volability and the need for risk mitigation in our budget planning process, but you can see that we project $136 million from those taxes. That's our three-and-a-half cent tax. That does not represent the tax increase that was recently adopted and will affect very specific things in the city. The other taxes that are levied by the city, for which the council makes that decision, is shown at the top of the chart. It's only about 4% of our budget. That would be things like rental taxes, liquor and lodging taxes, so forth. The property taxes are included in that upper-right slice of pie, which is included in all other. Those are levied by the council, they're actually collected by the Madison County tax collector, and so they're part of that presentation. Licenses and permits, building licenses, building permits, and so forth, are included in the purple slice. And then charges for services, the city does charge for some of its services directly, for example, picking up garbage and trash. We have charges for the sewer system, those are included in there, plus a variety of other smaller charges, riding the shuttle system and so forth. We have a very small percentage of our revenue that comes from federal and state grants, and then a category of about $20 million worth of a variety of many other things. So that's what the city looks like at the highest level. The city, because of a variety of management and also outside imposed requirements, must account for this $327 million in different funds or pots, as you would consider it. All of us are familiar, at a personal level, with a savings account that we might have, or a retirement account, or in our normal spending account, so that, the city has to operate in a similar manner. We keep separate accounts for different purposes that either the council has established or federal or state law have required us. So these are the six broad pots of money that we have. In terms of you understanding our budget, our general fund is the largest. The special revenue fund, where we have to put all of our special state gas tax monies, for example, and other things that are restricted by other government entities, those are included there. We have our capital improvement fund, that receives a very little, a very small amount of outside direct revenue. We have our water pollution control, or sewer fund. Community development, which is where we're required to keep that separate to account for the HUD money that we receive. And then a number of minor funds are included in that last category. This is often confusing, and sometimes people consider that to be overly complicated, but just like we manage our personal or our personal business affairs, we have to keep things in separate pots so that we can manage the specific activities that we're interested in separately. The second thing that's most confusing in our budget process, when we talk about how our money is spent, is that we're also required to transfer that money among the various funds or pots, just to show that we're complying with the law. For example, the general fund is where we collect most of our sales tax, but the city council has an ordinance that says that 18% of that sales tax has to be spent on capital projects, and we account for those capital projects in the capital improvement fund. And so there's a very large transfer of money from the general fund to the capital improvement fund. We also have to pay a lot of our debt service outside of our debt service fund, which is included over here on the far right, and so the resources that we collect to pay our debt comes from a variety of funds. And so we move the money to the place in which we're required to spend it. But that is confusing, and it makes our budget appear to be more complicated than it really is. At the end of the day, after you move all this money around, when you look in our budget book, you'll actually see a budget of $410 million. But it's very important to remember that the money that's coming in from outside the city is only $327 million, and that's what you're really making decisions on. The rest is just the movement between the funds. You can see, for example, the capital improvement fund gets larger simply because it's receiving its required share of sales tax from the general fund, and so forth. Now, what we wanna talk about for the next few minutes is just the general fund in particular, because that's where most city operations are financed. The community development fund accounts for one city department, the community development department, and the sanitary sewer fund accounts for water pollution control, but all of the other city operating departments are inside the general fund, and represents the largest amount of money. This is where the general, what the general fund revenues look like, a similar pie representation. $236 million comes in from outside the city, and we put that in the general fund. Sales taxes for the general fund represents a much larger share of revenue, and one good reason for that, for example, sewer revenues account for $35 million. Well, that's not on this pie chart, so it makes that sales tax portion of the general fund rise as a percentage, so we're, our general city operations are highly dependent on this source of consumer tax that flows into that fund. And then you can see all of the other significant slices. It looks pretty much similar to the chart that you saw before. The only significant difference would be the charges that appear here, because those, again, sewer revenues are over in another pot of money. One thing that we've talked about very regularly, and we'll continue to talk about it, because the recession of 2008, '09, and '10 will be, the effects of it will reach many years into the future, because it caused the city to shrink economically in terms of the level of people's incomes, business income, and also city revenues. Things got smaller, the schools call that proration, and proration is permanent. We are growing again, but we can't ever forget that when we got smaller, we started regrowing from that smaller position. The line that you see on the chart, I'm sorry, back up again. The line that you see on this chart was the real growth in our revenues, okay? And it's important to note that the green dots behind it are what our budget expectations were when they were adopted at the beginning of a fiscal year, typically around October the first. So to start at the very beginning, in October of 2004, we adopted a budget for fiscal year 2005, and we expected that revenues overall, excuse me, sales tax revenues would grow 4.5%. And they were actually much higher than that, in this almost 8% range, and then we budgeted five the next year, we exceeded that, we budgeted five here. And this is really a boom economic time for much of the nation, and also for the city of Huntsville. This was a high watermark fiscal year 2007 for most of the city's revenues. And we budgeted 5.5%, and we budgeted 6.5%. The recession for the city of Huntsville started in February of 2008, and that's when we saw the first, of course, it was spreading around the country, we saw the first decline in our sales tax. It wasn't clear if it was an aberration at that time, but then it went down consistently every month for more than a year, beginning about that time. And so this is when our real growth started to decline, and this is where we were caught off guard, I guess you can say economically, as many organizations, businesses, and governments around the country were, and we were trying to respond to that. In fiscal year 2010, we budgeted 1% sales growth, but our revenues were actually going negative at that point. So we were chasing the growth down with our budget expectations. Finally, we had reset our budget, and for 2011, we budgeted no growth in our revenues, and actually saw a 1% increase, and so that's kind of where we bottomed out. Fortunately for us, it was a brief recession compared to what has experienced in many very difficult-to-manage places around the country, but this was the time of our peak stress. So this revenue that we lost here, that's where revenues went down, sales tax was down 4.2% in fiscal year '09, that permanently shrunk our revenue budget. It's grown, and it's larger than it was back at that time, but it actually took us four years for revenues, I believe in 2012, to exceed the 2008 revenues for the first time. This is what happened to our spending over that period of time. We won't go into all of the details about how the mayor and the council had to work together to respond to the reduction in our revenues over that period, but this is the general categories in our budget. Some are very large, and some take a very small place, but we still wanna note all of the categories that we typically talk about. Personnel is the largest percentage of our budget. You can see that in 2008, just before the recession was started, we adopted a budget that was about half of our general fund. For the budget that's just been adopted this year, we're at 55, almost 56%. And then you can see the other areas, our operating budget, which is all of the things we spend generally in the departmental areas, fuel, supplies, utilities, repairs and maintenance, all of that is in here, and it doesn't amount to a very large percentage of our budget, even though we do spend a lot of time talking about it, and that is a very important part of the departmental, department's ability to function is funded out of there. So we have that. Our capital budgets in the departments, this was one of the responses we took to the recession. We had about $7 million budgeted for fleet in 2008, and it took us about 15 years to get to that, what we thought was an adequate level. That has been reduced almost to zero at this point, and that's because of the effects of the recession. And I'm sorry, this is actually this, this red slice in here, the numbers are here, so it's almost no percentage of our general fund budget now, which is not sustainable on a long-term basis. This figure here is agencies. We spend a lot of time talking about our city agencies and our outside agencies. You can see collectively that they only represent, back in 2008, they were about 6.3% of our total budget, and they're still right about 6.3% of our total budget. There's been some cuts and some restoration in there, but for the most part, it stayed about the same. The school system gets a noticeably large slice, that's a fixed percentage of our sales tax, 14.7%. Their numbers went down when our numbers went down, but we haven't changed that, that just is reflecting the change in sales tax. This slice right here bore the brunt, and that's the capital improvement plan funding. You'll recall two years ago, you approved a plan to permanently restructure the capital improvement plan. That came at great cost in terms of capital projects. We eliminated about $7 million per year. At this time, this capital fund was getting, in today's dollars, about $30 million a year from the general fund. That was 23% of sales tax at the time. It's now 18, and it's $23 million a year. So $7 million per year, the math is pretty easy on a 10-year basis, we actually cut out $77 million worth of potential projects two years ago from the 10-year capital improvement plan. So that and the cost to our fleet bore most of the impact of the recession, coupled with what I'll show you in just a moment. We have a number of transfers, as I explained, money we have to move around for debt service and things like that, money for retiree health insurance, that's part of this chart, and it's grown a few percentage points. It still only represents a small portion of the budget. Personnel growth, you can note here, and this is one thing we're very sensitive to, the two lar, the largest revenue is sales tax, the largest expense in the general fund is personnel. Sales tax is at 57%, and personnel is now at 55.5%, which means that sales tax is effectively paying for our people. Over the past six or seven years that this chart depicts, our revenues have only grown 1.3% on average, and that's including the dip that occurred in 2009 and '10, but personnel costs have increased 2.3%. So we spent a lot of time talking about people, numbers of people, and how much they're paid. Unfortunately, it's difficult to talk about that without sounding like you're talking about the value of people, but the reality is, is that they cost the city a lot of money, and so we just have to be diligent to manage those and know that the costs have an impact, and we have to keep that very large slice of our expenditures in line with the revenues that they happen to be tracking with right now. This is a snapshot of what happened during the recession. Over the period of time from 2008 to 2014, we've actually seen $11 million of growth, that's over a seven-year period, and that, that's including the decline we had, so of course, it'd been much larger. In $2008, we might've had double that revenue growth figure. So we've had that much more revenues, and then we've cut $8 million out of the CIP, we've cut about $6.6 million out of departmental fleet needs, it's almost zero, and then we've made some other cuts in operating costs of the departments, and that's been all to pay for the increases that we've seen. Even during the recession, we had seen a $10 million increase in personnel, that step raises, costs of healthcare, and so not everything went down during the recession. Revenues did first, and then we had to do this because we were having to address this. We had some mandatory increases in operating, we can't control that the price of gasoline goes up, or that the price of utilities goes up, and so forth. And then some of our transfers associated with our mandatory operations, and then we've had some increases in city agencies, that's mostly liquor and lodging tax, so that's kind of a distortion on this chart. So these things paid for the increased costs that we see over a seven-year period. This is a snapshot that you saw last fall of our 2014 budget. It's pretty simple and straightforward. You can see where we were in 2013, where we thought we would end, and we ended within, I think, 2/10ths of a percent of that figure, $236 million. We were expecting an additional $5 million for the current budget year they were in, and right now, we're tracking reasonably well towards that. We have, so the $241 million total revenue budget, and then the general fund was 236 last year, and we added, we've spent all of that new revenue, and you'll see that on the next slide. This is where the increases of that $5.2 million are going to be spent in the year, they're being spent as we speak. So personnel is in this area, everything in red, of course, is an increase, greens are decreases. So this is personnel costs, the council adopted a new longevity pay plan, that has a first-year impact of $300,000, next year, that'll be about $600,000. Step raises cost us about $1.2 million. Increases in RSA retirement rate cost us about the same. Healthcare costs, fortunately, were down, but still, it's a significant percentage. 1% COLA, all of these have about the same value on our budget. We had some reduction in personnel costs, workers' comp costs and things like that, some vacancy rate, the mayors talk with you a lot about holding positions open and vacant, so that's some of the savings we realized from that. Then these are the operating costs that increased, some agency changes. This is an anomaly too, where you passed a new liquor, excuse me, a new lodging tax last year, and that $800,000 is restricted, so that's what that big increase is for agencies. There were very little changes in agencies outside of that. And then some other small changes that we realized, the capital fund continued to get restructured and lose some money in that process. So that's what the changes on the general fund budget. So this right now is where a lot of our sales tax increase is going, a lot of these things you can consider them to be less controllable, almost mandatory. Step raises are not mandatory, but practically speaking, historically, we can view them as that way. So we tell you every time the budget, as soon as you adopt a budget for 2014, the decisions that are made with regards to that budget automatically create this kind of bar chart with respect to personnel for the next year, because step raises raise the people's pay, which then raises it again for the next year. COLAs do the same thing, and so forth. So anyway, that's what the $5.2 million looks like in the current year budget. I'll change subjects real quickly. We talk about debt often, especially when we borrow money, as we do on an average about once every year or 18 months. We know exactly how much money we have outstanding at any point in time. This chart is not accurate. Another thing that didn't get changed, this is today, it's 2016, we have $703 million of debt. This is generally how it's divided. We have specific sources of revenues. We've got a school property tax that well covers our debt obligation here. We've got TIF revenues that well cover our obligation there, you know, TIF I, TIF III have already been closed out early. The sewer system, we've got plenty of sewer revenues that, and we're required to keep a very precise coverage of that, and we're far exceeding that. And then we have resources within our capital fund and general fund that pay it off. That's the responsible for our AAA rating that we've received six times now since 2008, the first one of which occurred in the, after the recession began, in February of 2009. And then you can see, another reason we get a strong rating is that we've got an aggressive, higher-than-average, I guess is the best word for this forum to consider that, higher-than-average payout. We've fixed ourselves and hold it to about 20 years. We do have some debt that's longer than that, but you can see that within 10 years, we generally pay off about half of our debt, and you know that we refinance it at every opportunity to accelerate that schedule. So that's all that I had to present in terms of a budget overview. I hope that accomplished your objective, Councilman Kling, and we'll be glad to answer questions.
Okay, thank you. Before we open it up for the members of the public, I'm gonna turn the floor, turn the mic over to Councilman Culver, Vice Chairman of the Finance Committee, and also Council President Russell, for any comments that they would like to make at this, yes, sir?
I just realized, I did wanna mention, to remind the council and the, and the public, that the city of Huntsville's budget document is online, we've, it's available in a downloadable form, and it's a rather long document, but it includes many details. All of the expenditures for every single department, what they spend their money on in terms of operating dollars, the entire capital plan, and all the projects that the city has currently plans to do over the next 10 years is in there. Lots of personnel information about our benefits and things like that, and the budget process. So we encourage any member of the public to look at that, it's available, and it's created for their use, so, so that we can show as much...
It's on the website?
It's located on the city's website, you'd have to go to the Finance Department, and there's a reports page, and the budget's downloadable.
So it would be H S V C I T Y dot com?
Huntsville A L dot gov.
Huntsville A L dot gov, you go to that website, and then under City Departments, look for Finance Department?
That's correct.
And it's there for...
And you'll see a link to reports, and the budget'll be the first thing that appears on the list.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Culver, would you?
Okay, thank you, Councilman Kling. The reason for us holding these kinds of hearings is so the general public can see that it just goes to the furtherance of transparency, and I'm always excited, Mr. Taylor, when we're in the black, as opposed to being in the red, and you have done an extremely wonderful job with kinda overseeing our finances for the city. And just looking at the information, especially with the overview you presented tonight, it appears that the city of Huntsville is on solid ground financially. It's really nothing for us to jump up and down and holler about, but at least we're paying our bills, we're being responsible with the city finances. I know the general public sometime doesn't always understand why we do what we do, but we do it because we have to do it, and to keep city government up and running, so this is just, again, a grand opportunity for the public to weigh in on how we are handling the taxpayers' money. And based on everything that I see, I have seen, we definitely are responsible, and I'd also like to use the term conservative as it relates to how we are handling the taxpayers' money. So again, Mr. Taylor, my thanks to you and Chairman for overseeing this Finance Committee. You're doing a wonderful job as well. Thank you.
At this time, well, let me just kinda echo the comments, and I'm glad we could kinda show the public that we had our, we have our books open, and the fact that you've got the budget on the city of Huntsville website, I think is certainly a good thing that we're very pleased with. Out in the audience, we've got Mayor Battle. Mayor, were there any comments that you wanted to make, or anything you wanted to say above and beyond what, Mr. Taylor?
I think I've read them.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Mayor, appreciate you being here. If I could, there's one question, and I think this is something we hear from time to time from folks about, they have questions, concerns, and that's one of the reasons we wanted to have this meeting, where people from the public would have a chance to ask questions they were concerned about. From time to time, we've, we've had projects, and let me just use the Twickenham Square parking garage, for example, but a project such as that where the city puts in money for a facility as part of a development. Can you kinda go over and explain the rationale on why these things are recommended, and why the city council is very eager to follow your recommendation and to participate in these projects? And I, you know, just use Twickenham Square as an example, so I think that's one of the things to hear about.
I can do that, Mr. Kling. I'll speak to the economics of it, it's the mayor's and the council's place to speak to some of the other things, which we all can acknowledge, but there's the things that don't have to do anything with money, quality of life and other value to the city. But from an economic standpoint, for example, Twickenham Square, the city bill is building a parking garage there that will soon be ready to occupy and use, in connection with all of the different elements, private elements that are being built there, the office building, the residential apartments, and the garage connected to that, the Publix grocery store and the hotel. So those, that's a big component of downtown revitalization, but regardless of where it is, the city builds those kinds of public assets so that we can provide things that, one, the private marketplace likes, either business or citizens. We build roads so that people can drive on them, get to work, and also to incentivize development along those roads, we make them wider and improve their, the flows, so we can, they can be better things for people. So parking garages are the same way, we build parking garages so people have a place to park in high-density areas, and take advantage of all of the things that are available to them, that the private business community would provide, as we've already named off. So the city builds the parking garage, we built those parking garages all over town, the downtown area, in, over the many years, and so in this case, we've invested a certain amount of money in the parking garage, in the $9 million range. We required the developers to pay a certain amount of that construction as well. Huntsville Hospital provided the city $2 million for construction, so we got a million-plus from the developers, $2 million from Huntsville Hospital. City builds the garage, and that will serve all the needs of those private entities there in connection with particularly the business activities, the residential apartments have their own garage that they'll use for a lot of their needs. So we do that, and then we can see what's being built there. There's gonna be, we think, about $80 to $100 million worth of taxable structures that are built in that area, and an area that, it's important to note, was on the, was a public property before then, owned by the housing authority, didn't pay any taxes. And so that $80 million is gonna generate on an annual basis about a million dollars' worth of taxes to the city and the city school system. That's inside of TIF IV, we've got obligations associated with TIF IV, as you saw on the chart, so those revenues will simply bolster our ability to meet those obligations, and we're incentivizing the things that we intended to incentivize in the development of downtown. There's also sales taxes that are paid from projects like that, so a lot, significant portion of the city's garage investment, the city will receive directly back because sales taxes are paid to the city on construction materials. On an $80 million project, you've got about $40 million, $30 to $40 million would be materials invested in it, that's taxable at 3.5%, and the city collects that, uses it for capital projects and basic operations. So, and then we've got other revenues, business permit, a building permit revenues and business license revenues, so all of that happens there, and it creates, it's a place where people can work, so there's an increase in economic activity, because more people have jobs, more people have money, and that's really the most important thing that we can do, is we can stimulate the opportunity for people to earn a paycheck at all levels of the pay spectrum, and that's what we'll see there, and in addition to that, there's opportunity for businesses to make money. It won't all be new, and we don't count necessarily all the sales taxes that'll be generated there, but all the things that we mentioned to you are just brand-new dollars that the city sees as a return on some of its direct economic investment, and then, as I mentioned, most important, one of those important community development issues is just providing job opportunities for people. And then there's lots of other quality-of-life improvements that Mayor and Council are best understanding.
What about taking that to a dollars-and-cents basis? Let's just say over a 25-year period, okay, the parking garage is gonna cost the city, I think you said, $9 million. That development over there at Twickenham Square, over a 25-year period, you know, with the sales tax for the construction, and some new sales tax from the business and the property tax, can you give just a very general ballpark, how much would come in off of that over a 25-year period? 25-year period?
Well, using the numbers that, that I just threw out generally, and we presented this when the, the Twickenham Square project was being considered by the council. Shane Davis presented those figures. Here's what we think. The developers provided a lot of those numbers, honestly, and we, we were clear about that. This is what everybody's best estimates were. That's what we're seeing being realized down there. There's no deviation from that. If anything, it may be more. So, the sales taxes will produce about 1.5, 1.6 million of immediate return to the city. Comes into the general fund, the school system, and the capital fund both receive a share of that. So, now our $9 million investment has gone down to 7.5, round numbers. Property taxes will be paid at the rate of about a million a year on all of those properties. Over a 20-year period, Councilman, that's $20 million worth of property taxes. Some of it goes to other entities, but the city is a, would be a recipient of a lot of that money, as are the school system. So, those are the two that are recurring. I couldn't speculate on what new sales tax dollars would be generated by the consumer activity in that area, but those are the two significant ones.
Okay, so the bottom line, in talking to people, we were putting up $9 million for this project. We'll get a 1.5 million based on sales tax from the building supplies, and you're saying about a million a year, 25 years, that's 25 million, and then some net increase in sales tax, lodging tax that comes in from that development. Is that?
That's correct.
Okay, that's all that.
Mr. Taylor, isn't it correct that we didn't put in $9 million? I thought we put in $6 million.
To be honest with you, Councilman, there's, there's a lot of numbers associated with the project, and it, it may have been in that.
Okay, I thought we just, you just said that Huntsville put in about a million, and the developer put in $2.
Well, the total cost of the garage was in the $11.5 million range, so somewhere in 8 or 9, I think.
So, bottom line, we're talking about $25 million in additional property tax, 1.5 million one-time construction sales tax, and then some net increase set of four Publix. We have five Publix, and, you know, that'll bring in some new money and the hotel onsite too.
Right.
Okay, let's, these are types of things people ask us, I think, about on these projects, but y'all look at them very carefully, and you have a good dollars-and-cents, you know, ratio before you bring them to the council and all that, that. Well, there's nobody else up here that wants to ask any, make any comments, Council? I think Mr. Russell didn't want to. We'll just open up the floor. If you would, go to a microphone, and if you'd give your name and address for the record. That way, if there's some information that you request that we're not able to get for you tonight, we can follow up with you later. But anyone who wants to is welcome to go to the mic, and we'll open up. Gary?
Gary Bershers, I live here in Huntsville. First off, that was one of the questions I was going to ask, which was, I've been to a number of these meetings, and we hear about all this money that's being expended, but we never hear the backend, which always confused. I can read a spreadsheet, okay? So, it's always confusing unless you hear that kind of information. Mr. Taylor, thank you for doing that. That, that helped me. I don't know if it'll help anybody else, but it helped me on that. I have some questions on expenditures, and I don't know if somebody else wants to speak to what Mr. Taylor's talking about, because my stuff doesn't relate to this specific issue, and I don't want to hold anything up, so I don't know if anybody else wants to speak. And then I'd like to come back and ask some more questions if they have questions for him.
Gary, why don't you go and ask your questions? If we don't have the answers immediately, again, we can follow up with you later. That's why we wanted to have your address or phone number somehow we can, we can get.
Sure. First again, thank you for speaking. I do have some questions, and some of these will probably require somebody getting back to me, and I don't mind that. Just so you know, I understand that you're not the people that have specific details. But what I've done is, I've gone back over last year's expenditures, looking at a general sense for where money is spent, tax dollars is spent. And I have a question, a couple of questions. But the first one is, you'll hear me say this each time that I address you, and that is, I would ask the members of the City Council who are here to reconsider the 1% sales tax that we, we added just this past December. I would ask that you consider putting a sundown.
Sunset.
Sunset, thank you. Sunset on that. Mayor Battle mentioned during some of the discussions we had that the council could go back and review any issue a previous council has done, so I again implore you to consider that. I know you didn't when you adopted it, but please consider doing that each time you meet.
Gary? I'm not going to interrupt, just to clarify on that. We did have it, Councilman Russell brought that up as an amendment. I supported it, but the majority of the council did not. But that was something that we did.
Yes, I understood that. It was not adopted. I'm asking if you did consider it and adopt it. Okay, question. Do we have a, and y'all can answer this, do we have a, an individual or, or a department that is a legal department for the City of Huntsville?
Yes, there's a city, city attorney's office that has a staff of four or five attorneys and assistants in there.
Okay. If we do, then here's my question. We spent almost $1.2 million in legal fees last year. I went back and looked at each month from January through December of expenditures that the council approved. $891,730 were to primarily one legal firm here in town, which did not include the, and that $1.2 million includes indigent services that we provided. So, I, I'm curious, we have a staff of lawyers that we pay. We, they're on our payroll, we pay benefits, there's a group of people there, and then we spend another $900,000 in legal services. I'm trying to figure out why we would be doing that. That's question one.
You want to, you want me to respond to that, or?
Yeah, okay, if you're able to. Again, it's, we may have to get answers for some of these questions later.
I'd like to address it also, Mr. Kling, after Mr. Taylor.
And I can speak to it generally. The city attorney is, is the best respondent to that for the citizen, and I'll speak here so I can speak in the microphone. The city spends lots of money with outside businesses that provide services to us. It's not just attorneys. Of course, we do that deliberately. There are services, particularly in the legal area, that are especially complex, whether it's in litigation support, which is where we spend a lot of money, and I think probably with the firm that the citizen is referring to. We, for today, I know, for example, that I've spent time on the phone today and yesterday with a firm that we utilize in Birmingham for advice on borrowing money and also on very complex economic development projects for which we do not possess the in-house expertise. So, we might very well be able to provide those services with our own staff, but we would have to spend a considerable amount of public money to be able to provide those services too. But we do that in landscape management, as an example. We cut a lot of our own city properties, the grass, and maintain them, but we also hire lots of private companies, again, to utilize the skills they have that are appropriate for some of the services. So, city attorney should best respond to all of the details from Mr. Bershers' question, but that's a general explanation of why we need outside professional expertise in, in this particular case.
Thank you, Mr. Councilor.
Just to expound on that a bit, the City of Huntsville probably would have to hire more city attorneys, more litigators, because the City of Huntsville is seemingly always involved in some kind of lawsuit, and the lawyers that we have do exceedingly well in terms of the prosecutorial team and the litigators, and they do work in conjunction with some of those firms that the city has farmed out some of the legal services too. So, it, it kind of makes for a good combination.
And I would add one more clarification for indigent care. That would be evident in our expenditure reports. We have one firm that has that contract. We actually receive a, a fee from the state of Alabama. It's, it's part of the, the court costs dividing up of that revenue that we have to use for indigent care, and that firm receives no more than what we collect from those fees. It's, the maximum is about $27,000 a month that they would pay, that they would receive for that.
And to that, Mr. Taylor, I, I don't know if you were here at the time, but during the time that we created or we started subcontracting with one law firm to handle all of our indigent defense.
Sure, and that was reflected in the, the paperwork that I found online as to who that was.
Right. I just wanted to say that we were spending $800-plus thousand a year by having various attorneys who sign a rule to come in to provide indigent defense. In fact, I was instrumental in devising that contract or assisting in that process at that time when we identified a small law firm to do that. So, we have been able to save $500,000 or $600,000 a year from years ago by having one law firm, a diversified law firm, to provide that indigent defense. So, that legal bill that you're referring to is, I, I dare say that in comparison to a city the size of Huntsville, that would be very reasonable and relatively small.
Well, and again, when you look online and you see something without explanations, you have to wonder, because I'm looking at an average of about $88,000 a month to one firm that we, we bill, that bills us, bills the City of Huntsville, that we turn around and pay, and it's pretty consistently close to that amount every month. You know, an outsider looking at it goes, well, we have a department, they should be able to cover, cover some of that, and I'm going to go look at, at least the years in the past, and if we're spending that kind of money annually, and we think we would spend it on an ongoing basis, it may be worth us investing in hiring a couple of more, three or four lawyers who could come in for the city and, again, do the same thing like you did with, with the indigent care. Maybe we can bring somebody in to offset some of that cost and end up, even though we increase our employment, we could decrease our costs by removing that, that part of the, the cost to the city's budget. It's just an outsider's observation, looking at what I could see.
And, and that is a, a great idea, however, if you look at most governments, it's cheaper and more reasonable in some cases to subcontract out those services rather than to try to hire someone with that kind of expertise to come in and be an employee for the city. And I'm sure that number varies from year to year. Mr. Taylor, I know you would have that information. It probably just depends on what's happening with the city. As you may remember, the jail litigation.
Right.
You know, that was an item that probably consumed a lot of our time and, and, and energy as it relates to the legal team and to farming out some of those services. It was probably, in fact, it was very expensive, but when we look at what we saved, you know, as a result of that, it certainly makes it worth it. And I know that's still ongoing, but I'm only using that as an example. When you have departments like the Police Department and Sanitation and Parking and various departments, there are always lawsuits that's going to arise out of that. In fact, each week, each council meeting, we have several notices from our legal team where we are being sued, and a lot of cases, it's, it's easier to settle those claims, especially when they are warranted claims. Like, for example, when the flooding occurred over off of Table Road, you know, it's just easier to settle those claims than to go through some, you know, extremely costly litigation process, especially when it's warranted, so.
Right. In looking at the, the information that was provided online, it showed that about $160,000 had been paid out to some issue that occurred that, that was a line item in the expenditures that was approved. So, at some point, understanding that, and having dealt with large companies before, I know that an entity like the City of Huntsville is going to be a target.
Absolutely.
So, that's why I was just asking if, if, if we see this on a regular basis, would it not be prudent to go hire those people and reduce our costs? But again, that's just an outsider's looking at it without knowing some of the information.
Right, thank you.
And I will say this, the expertise that these lawyers bring to the table is, is the kind of expertise, if we tried to hire somebody on our staff in that, we would be paying $200,000, $300,000 a year. This week, I've talked to a lawyer who has expertise in HUD, in fact, was an Under-Secretary of HUD, and working with HUD issues. We've talked with an industrial development lawyer who is in, in, who has expertise in the industrial development side. We've talked to lawyers who, who represent our police in making, in, in civil lawsuits, but also they understand the, the ramifications of the criminal justice system too, and they have expertise in that. So, that's one of the things that we go outside to hire the people with that expertise. If we tried to hire them and make them employees of the city, by the time we hired all the different expertise people that we needed, we would be going way beyond the budget of what we're looking at. And we, we look at that on a regular basis, but the expertise is, is what, you want the best lawyer who can to be representing the City of Huntsville, because we're talking, a lot of these issues that we're talking are millions of dollars, so you want to make sure that you have the best representation you can.
Okay. Gary, you have anything?
I have a couple more questions, but again, I don't want to occupy everything if somebody else wants to speak, so.
If anybody else wants to speak, they'll, they'll get up and go to the microphone.
They'll come throw me off, throw me off the, okay. I've noticed, looking back over last year and then in January's report, there's been a significant amount of money spent on the Holiday Drive North-South Connector.
Now, he had asked me, that is not, that's not Holiday Drive and Holiday Homes.
Well, in January alone, we spent $700,000.
Out in the county?
So, I'm, I'm curious as to what that is.
This is a project in Limestone County, associated with the development of that. I don't know the exact location of the road, but that's, that is not inside the city proper, but it's, it's in the city, of course, but it's out over on the western edge and.
I tell you what, Gary, let me get your address, and we'll try to get that information from maybe Marie Bostick or?
Yeah, I, I'm curious, because I looked, and I, I looked, starting in May of last year, we started expending a significant amount of money. Didn't add it up, but it's there, so that's why I'm just curious as to where all that, that money is going to.
Yeah, we have a contract with a contractor. That's a project that was approved inside the city's Capital Improvement Plan, and then was turned into a budget in 2012. The plan turned into the real spending of money, and that project commenced with a contractor award sometime last year.
And as I said, it's, it's a connector road in Limestone County. It goes between Highway 72, Highway 72 West out there and, I want to say it's Brown's Ferry, but I'm not sure what, what the connector is, but we'll get, get you that information.
Gary, what's your address?
I'll give you, I'll give it to you so that, because I, I've got one more question. I, like a lot of people, I'm a target shooter. I noticed that the City of Huntsville purchased from Gulf States Distributing $18,000 worth of what the liberal media likes to call assault weapons, 6-hour, 5:52, let's see, yeah, 6-hour, 5:16. These are short-barrel semi-automatic rifles, and I'm all in favor, let me first say, I'm grateful we have a, both fire and police willing to go do those kinds of things. I'm curious why we need that level of firepower, and I'm also curious as to why we didn't buy it local, because this was bought out of Montgomery. So, and I can, I can go talk to my friends in the Police Department. I just, again, as I was taught many years ago, the detail, the devil's in the details, so.
The item, I can speak generally to our, of why we bought it from a particular vendor. We have to buy according to bid, contracts that have been bid, and so that vendor would have been the chosen supplier for that product. The police chief would have to address the need for those.
There is, isn't there a, like a 3% benefit for local firms when we do bids for a Huntsville firm?
There is. It's something that's evaluated during the bid process, but once the contract's awarded. But again, local, you have to have someone who actually supplies that particular commodity inside the City of Huntsville, and while there may be people that sell guns here, they may not sell that particular gun. But anyway, the police chief would have to.
Would it be a reasonable guess, and again, I don't know the specifics, that if that weapon was sold here in the City of Huntsville, that the Montgomery vendor would have been at least 3% lower in price than the Huntsville firm? Is that a reasonable assumption?
I can't say that, Mr. Kling, because we, this is probably a state contract bid. It's, we don't bid everything out that we buy. The state bids certain items as well, and there's other contracts that we're allowed to participate in, so. there's other contracts that we're allowed to participate in. So, we don't buy those kind of guns that often, so we probably wouldn't put a bid out like that for ourselves.
And just to add my two cents worth, being a former police officer, we want to make sure our police department has what it needs to get the job done. I remember vividly working the streets and being outgunned by some person who's engaging in illegal activity. So, with...
Under that circumstance, Mr. Culver, and again, I understand the reason for that, then a mini Gatling gun would be appropriate for every police cruiser we put on the street because that's the only way to not be outgunned anymore these days.
Well, I'm not sure if we need to go to that extent, but we certainly want to, want them to have the kinds of equipment they need to properly, you know, protect our residents. Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience want to make any, yes, sir?
Good evening. I want to thank you for the presentation, and I'm very, very sad that all the people in the city of Huntsville, that we can't get anyone down here interested in how you spend their money. So, keep on spending it, I guess. They don't care. I hope they do. I want to say that I believe and think that Mr. Randy Taylor does a AAA job. I watch him shovel figures. He just moves them around and he always comes up to make it look well, and I appreciate his work. And hey, I don't compliment many people. Trust me. We know that. Twickenham Square. All we did for Twickenham Square was build a parking garage. Is that, as far as any of you know, the truth, or did we build some condos that nobody don't know about atop of the parking garages? That concerns me at a meeting I went to one time, and I'm not going to get into it tonight. But did we, are we building, yes, I'd like to hear that answer, any of those condos down there at Twickenham Square, or anybody? Who would know that answer? I'll have to go get a permit and find out who's building them.
I can tell you, we are not building condos down at Twickenham Square. Our responsibility was a parking deck, which we were in conjunction with Huntsville Hospital alone. I think our total outlay was about eight point four million or something like that on the parking deck. We had one point six million that was going to come back in off of the sales tax from the building materials for the condos, the hotel, the Publix and the office building. So, we were six point eight million out, and we were figuring, I think, two point three million was going to come in a year on sales tax, property tax, and liquor and lodging tax off of it. So, we had about a three, three and a half year payback on that.
I'll make my questions quick tonight. Does, did the city own the land that all this stuff, Twickenham's being built on? And if the city owns land, that public-private partnership goes on, who does, do they have to pay property taxes if it's on city property?
The city does not own the land. We only own the land under the parking garage, and we own the land that will constitute the new downtown gateway road, which is adjacent to the property. But we only own the parking garage land. All the other land for the private structures is owned or leased by those private entities.
So, they'll pay property taxes?
That's correct.
Thank you. And then we're building the road into the, from Governor's Drive into Twickenham, and we don't know the cost of that yet, but I'm sure it's going to be quite a bit. I'll not ask you tonight. I will ask you, though, about streetscape downtown. How many millions have we put in so far into streetscape called taking up bricks, putting down new brick downtown? I'd like to have an answer as to far, how much we're going to put into it and how much have we already put into it?
If we're not able to get, Randy doesn't know the answer right now, we'll track it down and let you know, mail it out to you.
And over what time period do you want?
Well, I know we put four point nine million in right under that Belks Loft thing right there, so whenever, I'll still be here.
Do you understand, in the last five years, ten years, one year, twenty years, what would you like?
Since the Belks Loft has been built, the roads and...
Last five years?
Whatever you've done downtown, whatever you're doing downtown, I guess, is what I'm trying to find out. How much money have you put in what you're doing downtown? Maybe you can come over there at the next council meeting or two. I'm not asking tonight. You don't have to tell me tonight.
Jackie, I'll see if we can get it and mail it out to you, maybe put in the mail tomorrow afternoon. Okay, anything else you want to talk about, ask?
Talk about.
No, I mean, you've got the floor. Is there anything else? I'm going to get that information. I'll track it down and get someone to mail it to you on that.
Okay. I see we've got a lot of capital improvement. I'm asking about public-private partnership. I'm against that, the way you all laid out there. I've always been against that. We build, they got thirty, like, parking garage on Holmes Avenue. That was never discussed. You gave him a contract. I want a copy of that. He paid ten thousand dollars down, and you gave him a contract, and we're going to do a whole lot for that. You appraised the property at one point seven million supposedly. I don't know that, but that's what you said. And a public-private partnership, so we're going to give him the land and let him sit upon it and build his property. He's going to pay a hundred dollars a year for fifty years to renew it fifty more years. I mean, public-private partnership, I'd just like to have that contract in my hands. Money, that is part of money that we can't count on this paperwork.
Okay, we'll see if we can get that information for you.
All right. Also, try to tell me about this Coca-Cola building over here. What's your plans for the Coca-Cola building, and is it in the budget? Have you got plans to money to spend that with capital funds? And the ball fell. Is that laid out there on the long-range planning?
No. The Coca-Cola building is a private entity. We have talked to them. As I understand it, they may be under contract right now with the Coca-Cola building. Don't know if that will come to fruition. There's no contract. It's not with the city. It was with a private, a private person.
City has nothing to do with it?
Nope.
What about the parking garage over here that somebody wants to set something on top of that? Is that in the budget?
The parking garage right now, that we have put out a request for proposals, if someone wants to build a hotel across from the Civic Center, because with losing the Holiday Inn, we lose two hundred and twenty-five rooms out of the number of rooms that we have. So, we put out requests for proposals. If someone wanted to build a hotel on the site where the parking garage is, they would have to replace the parking that is there, and we would have to make sure that it worked within our plan. And we have not, the request proposal has not quite closed yet. I think it's got a couple, couple more days left before we get them all in.
There's a proposal already out here?
The request for proposals, we passed that in council probably two months ago, three months ago, and went out to the public. People requested, I think they had eleven people requested paperwork on it, and we'll see how many turn back in.
What about this parking garage across the street from the Von Braun Civic Center?
That's the one we're talking about.
Not the one at Holiday Inn down there. That's not the one you're talking about?
No.
You're talking about this other one?
Yes.
Why don't the city build a parking garage for the people at the Von Braun Civic Center so you won't have them spread out all over the city? Why don't we take our money and build layers of parking garages up and upper level? How come I can't be part of the planning and part of the city? Who makes y'all's decisions anyways, what I'd like to know? Downtown Inc., Big Spring Partners, Downtown Redevelopment, these are all your nonprofits sitting out there making decisions for every one of you, and the public can't even go to none of their meetings. I've got a real problem with that. Do we give them ninety-nine thousand dollars a year, sir?
And I will assure you, there's not one entity that makes all the decisions. Not even our planning department makes all the decisions. Our job is to bring everybody together and have a consortium of ideas and come together with an idea that fits for everybody. And we do that on a regular basis. We pull in lots of stakeholders and lots of people who are involved, people from the public. We have people from the public who was on the planning commission. We have, who are public volunteers. We have people from the public who work in our planning charrettes. Right now, Dennis Madston is putting together a long-range urban plan for the city of Huntsville and having numerous charrettes from throughout the community. And one of his purposes is to go out to the neighborhood associations and talk to them so that everybody has a part of this. I mean, we can't, we can't lead it with just one person saying, hey, this is the way we're going to go and we're going to move down the road. We've got to have everybody, everybody behind it, and everybody's got to have their say in it. That's the only way that government works.
Everybody is not involved. I'm sorry. Anyway, money, I watch you very closely. I do think you waste quite a bit. I don't think the roads of our city has been handled and cared for well. We're too more interested in throwing money downtown than we are taking care of the entire city. And in your budget, I would like to see people, the whole city taken care of.
And one thing to look at, you know, when you start talking about downtown, I think we might, with the two projects that we've done, eight million dollars we might have spent with the downtown redoing sidewalks, redoing walkability, making it more walkable for everybody. But that eight million dollars pales in comparison to the twenty-four million dollars that we spent on South Parkway, on overpass at Weatherly, and the twenty million dollars we're about to spend on Lily Flag and Bird Springs to do overpasses. It pales in comparison to Governor's Drive where we're spending, we spent thirty-six million dollars so that we could affect the population living out to the east of us. It pales in comparison when we start talking about the fifteen million dollars we're going to spend at the end of five, five sixty-five to take care of the people who are on Seventy-two East. It pales in comparison to the twenty-four million dollars we're going to spend on the northern bypass and the twenty million dollars that we're going to spend on the overpass at Maston Lake for the northern section of the town. And to the west of the section of town, we're spending seventeen million dollars on Dirt Road. We're spending another thirty million dollars on Highway Seventy-two West so that people can get in and get out. Every section of this city has something being spent on it and something being worked on it so that we can make sure that everybody's taken care of. It's a big city. There's a north, south, east, west, and a center town, and each portion of it is getting their portion of the dollars to make sure that we take care of everybody.
Well, I want to compliment the two new overpasses. Riding on them, it's better than these little dips that we have up and down the city over the long-range planning, but I compliment those because they were built well. Thank you.
Ms. Reed, one other thing, kind of piggybacking off the mayor's comments about the condition of the streets. This is the time of the year when the streets are really in the roughest shape because of rain, cold weather, sun comes out and everything. Mr. Hatfield's already gearing up for resurfacing, and one of the things, as you know, the mayor and the council have done the last four years is we designated that two-thirds of all the road resurfacing monies can go into neighborhood streets so we can kind of catch up. And Gary's a good example of a street that needs to catch up on. But we're, Mr. Hatfield's ready, and it'll be a couple of months until spring comes in and it's warmer weather and they can get back on the streets. But winter time is always the worst time of the year for city streets with the moisture and the coldness coming in. And that's basically spent citywide on an equal basis when we do the resurfacing. Yes, sir?
Yeah, my name is Jeff Statham. I'm vice president of Huntsville Firefighters Association. I have a question for Mr. Taylor. On your graph earlier, you showed pretty significant increase on retirement costs to the city. Could you elaborate on that some, please?
I can. The city, of course, is a participant in the Alabama State Retirement System. We're the largest local government participant. There's larger cities, but they have their own pension retirement plans. So, the city is required to contribute a certain amount of money to that plan that matches the employee share. The employee share for older tier-one employees before they made the change two years ago is five percent, I believe six percent for public safety, including firefighters. And then the newer employees will pay a higher percentage of that. But the city is required to pay a percentage that matches the employee share so that when the employee retires, enough money has accumulated in order to pay the benefits that the system offers. The city's current share is about fourteen percent. The number has been rising steadily over the past ten or so years. It used to be about four percent, slightly less than employee share, but because of the increase in costs, the effect of investments and inflation and recessions, the city has to make up what the system doesn't earn or receive from the employees. So, we pay fourteen percent. Every one percentage increase is about another million dollars. So, we went from about twelve and a half to thirteen and a half in the current budget year.
Jack answer it for you, okay?
Yeah, I think so. I know the earnings this year, they showed at fourteen percent with RSA. Is that going to benefit the city having a better earning for the...
We expect that it will. The, all retirement systems operate on a, on a five or so-year basis where, for example, if the RSA suffered a really big loss in its investments, the city wouldn't get hammered in its budget and have to make up that difference. If the RSA received a really big gain, the city's share wouldn't drop significantly because that plays havoc with a, with a local government budget. I don't want it to go from nine percent to sixteen percent to eleven percent. I want it to stay steady. And so, yes, we see the effects of that. Next year, in fiscal year fifteen, we already know that our retirement rate is only going to increase just a little bit, so that's surely partly because of that.
And I will say, we had a meeting with the mayors from the larger metropolitan areas a couple of weeks ago, and all of us talked about the liability that you can have from your retirement system. Some of them have their own retirement system, which is carved out, and some of them have it just for public safety. Some of them have it for their full employees. And there's some significant liabilities laying out there with each of those. One thing that we, I think we've been wise with is to offload this to somebody who has a bigger pot and has the expertise to do it. And we've been able to, you know, it's tough when you're paying fourteen percent of payroll to, to, to a retirement system, but also you're sure that you're paying enough so that the money's there when necessary so that our employees will get paid and they won't get stuck into one of those problems of a underfunded liability and that.
Yes, sir. We do appreciate the RSA, and we do appreciate also, not many employees realize that Huntsville keeps their fund well-funded, unlike some of the other cities that we've heard about. So, we do appreciate that on y'all's part.
And Mr. Chairman.
We appreciate the job you guys do under challenging circumstances, especially with the weather being what it is lately.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir. We've been earning our pay lately. It seems like there's been fires all over the city. We'll get through it.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
With your permission, sir, I'd like for us to recognize our city administrator, Mr. John Hamilton, who's with us tonight as well.
Ms. Reed, before I get to you, let me, Barbara, did you want to have an opportunity to say anything, or you're just observing? Okay, we're glad to have you. Ms. Reed, you've got the floor.
I just got one question. He was speaking of legal fees. Are we still paying for the jail lawsuit? Is that over? Are we still paying for that lawsuit, or is it over? Did we ever win or lose, or what happened to that jail lawsuit?
Ms. Reed, that one is still ongoing.
It's ongoing?
Ongoing. Yes, it is.
Mercy.
I know. Me too. I said the same thing.
Thank you.
One last question, I apologize. You mentioned something new that y'all had started about a longevity bonus, and it looked like it was going to grow from whatever it is now twice as much next year. So, my question is, what is it going to look like five, ten years from now in relation to what he just spoke about, which is a concern, is the retirement system that we have, monies we're paying in payroll, is my biggest concern, and I mentioned this to you, Mayor, now you said that we are not like other places, but I'm sure the, and I'm not saying that you're like the mayors of Detroit and Chicago and all, but they also thought everything is good too until it all fell apart. When we look at something like those issues, where is it projected over the next five, six, ten years as to the percentage of the budget's going to be taken up with payroll, insurance? Because with Obamacare, I'm sure that we haven't seen how that's going to affect us yet either. So, we've got all these factors. I'm just curious where that's looking like.
The city does have a five-year operating budget model. We have a ten-year capital plan and a five-year general fund model. So, when the council adopted a new increase in this longevity benefit, we've had one for a long time. This raised the cost of it, and it's being phased in over three years. So, that's what I was referring to a moment ago. The first phase is the cost that you saw on the chart. The second phase will... will, will double that and it'll, it'll rise, um, I think to one point two million, a new cost per year, so we factored that into our, our model, um, which means that, uh, because our budget is tied as it is, and again, the hardest thing in our budget is when we talk about personnel cost, whether it's longevity, step raises, COLA, is, it, it sounds like every one of those conversations is a commentary about the worth of an employee, and it, it's not, uh, but it's simply a function that it's our, our largest cost and we only have so much money, so if we're going to spend an additional million dollars on anything personnel, because that's such a large number for us, in spite of a three hundred and twenty-seven million dollar budget, it's all accounted for, uh, it's all been spent and there's things waiting in line, uh, that we had to push out of the way, so whenever we increase one cost, we have to go into our long-term model and offset it somewhere in there for other costs, so that's what we attempt to do, we can't predict the future perfectly, but we're, we're trying to make those trades, uh, in response to the things that, uh, happen financially.
Randy, can you talk about, uh, Mayor, maybe you can jump in too, but, uh, I think around two thousand eight, two thousand nine, two thousand ten, uh, there were actually some, some belt tightening measures that were done, numbers of employees were reduced through voluntary retirements.
Well, you know, we, we used a lot of tools in the tool best, uh, belt, uh, in the toolbox to make, make sure that we could, um, could end up with a balanced budget, uh, we did cut into the capital fund, we did do an employee buyout, uh, bought, bought out your older employees, tried to hold off hiring the new employees, um, and brought them in at a lesser grade, so that there was a lesser cost to you, uh, so, working along, along through that process, um, we, we, we have stayed fairly tight as we have moved along. One of the biggest things, and, and you're exactly right, one of the biggest things you have to watch out for are the hidden costs that, that may not be a cost this year, but twenty years down the road, they are a cost that, um, that, that, that somebody has to pay.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, that's what you look at in Detroit, they set up a plan, a payment pension plan, uh, and everybody said, this will be great, let's, let's do this for our employees, let's do this, and it's like Mr. Taylor says, every time you were doing it, you were, it was kind of like you were talking about the worth of employee, but also, you have to look at it as, how does that fit into the budget, how does that fit into long-term budget, and how are we going to continue to do it? Everybody thought that Detroit was a booming, growing city and would continue to grow, continue to have revenues, continue to, you know, have, um, five, six, seven percent growth in their revenues, and then when, uh, when the bad times hit, uh, Detroit went on the skids and all of a sudden they started, they saw a twenty-five, thirty percent drop in their revenues, and it's unsustainable, and that's one thing that I'm, I'm very proud of our council, because our council, when we start talking about things, we have to talk about where we, what the effects of what we're doing are five, ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road in our budgetary process, and, and we have to look and make sure that we don't overextend ourselves, uh, in that way, so that in fifteen years, we all of a sudden have a population that can't, uh, can't afford, can't afford ourselves, and that's, that's one of the things that we have to watch on a daily basis, and I'm, you know, uh, that's one of the reasons we have these conversations every once in a while, because it's a good conversation to have, it's one of the reasons we pass around the, uh, sheets on the Stockton Californias and the Detroit Michigan, so people can see what mistakes were made in the past, and, and some of them are abnormal mistakes that we, what we hope will never hit here, but some of them are things that we have to watch too, and you learn from the history of other cities and other, what others have done, and, um, we try to make sure that we learn those lessons well, so that we can continue to provide for it, one of the biggest things that we tried to do in two thousand nine is not send any pink slips home, we didn't want to send anybody home out of work, we wanted to make sure that we kept people working, but to do that, we had to, A, drop out, uh, drop out and cost of living, we had to, to use all those tools that we could, uh, and cut back on everywhere we could, and, and we were able to do it, we got through that, that time, our employees, we, we have, um, numbers-wise, I think we have less employees today than we had in, uh, or about, right about the same number that we had in two thousand eight, and we're two hundred and ten square miles, but we did that by, um, by being conservative in our numbers and being very conservative in our spending and, you know, and, and you got to say that the council was, was, uh, very much part of that process, making sure that we, um, did the right things as we went through those years.
There are no other questions or comments, uh, anybody on the, up here want to make any comments, I'm going to just adjourn the meeting and thank everybody for coming, and again, uh, anyone that's interested in looking at the, uh, city budget, it is on the City of Huntsville website, under the, uh, Finance Department, and appreciate everybody coming out, Mayor, uh, Councilman Culver, Randy, uh, thank you for your participation, Councilman Russell, thank you for.